All right, good evening and welcome to the USD 290 revenue neutral hearing. It is September 13th, 2021 at 6:30 PM. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order and we'll do a roll call. Go ahead and please indicate that you're here if you are here. Shanta Olmstead, she is absent right now. Chris Cunningham.
Here.
Linda Alderman.
Present.
Harold Wingert.
Here.
Harold is here virtually. Melodya Payne, she is absent at this point. And Susan Moore.
Here.
And Susan is here virtually as well. Three, four, so we have one, two, three, four, five of us present here. And we have enough to go ahead and have a quorum. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 5-0. Okay, so we have our revenue neutral presentation. Dr. Kobs.
Yep. Dean, if you'd pull up that form. Okay, so this is obviously new, not something that we've had to do as a school district before, but this is part of new legislation identifying when we would see a tax increase. I think it's important to note a couple of things within this document is that the tax increase that our patrons are going to see is based upon an increase in assessed valuation, not an increase in mill levy. So there are a couple of pieces of this that we want to draw attention to. The first is the general fund there has a mandatory tax mill levy rate with 20 mils. We don't have any choice on this. It's a mandatory rate. We have to assess 20 mils one way or the other. And you see that that is an increase of a little over $200,000 in our overall tax in comparison to last year. I think the overall increase in tax is about $270,000. So what, about 75% of the increase that we have based upon our neutral revenue or revenue neutral rate is based upon a mandatory mill levy from the state. The other things that we see is that you saw a slight reduction at about 4 tenths of a point in the supplemental general aid. So you see a reduction in mill levy there, even though you still see an increase in taxation. So reduction in mill levy. You saw a 3,000ths, the 3,1,000ths of an increase in mill levy on bond and interest and an overall slight mill levy, a 3,1,000ths of an increase in capital outlay as well, and excuse me, is a 6,1,000ths of an increase in bonded interest. So overall, you see a reduction of about, of about 0.35 mils, a little over a third of a mil coming off of the tax. But again, you see an increase in taxation based solely on increased in assessed valuation, which is ultimately good for our community, that our property is more valuable now than it was a year ago, at least according to those who identify taxation. Ultimately, that's the revenue neutral process. Again, there isn't a whole lot that we could have done without putting us below what the intended increase for school funding would have been, which is why there was an increase in school funding rates and an increase in base state aid per pupil. But ultimately, the thing that created the most increase in taxation was the mandatory mill levy at 20 mils for general fund. So any questions for me before we turn it over to patrons for comment?
I think we're good. We've spent a lot of time on this, so thank you. All right, at this time, if there are any questions or comments from district patrons, we will hear those now. Hi, please give us your name and your address, please.
Yep, Jason Burvey, 3937 Louisiana Road here in Ottawa. I was just coming up here to kind of explain what you guys are looking at up here because I know it's a lot of numbers. I know when I get those statements in the mail that's talking about the mill levies and you look at those things and you're like, what am I even looking at? It's like, how do you even calculate these off these statements? But basically what he's talking about, the new legislation, it was actually written by our own Kansas State Senator. Karen Tyson was the main sponsor and got this passed. It was a transparency and taxation bill so people can understand what is going into these mill levy rates and what's going into the statements. And instead of somebody up on the school board or on the county commission saying, hey, well, we lowered your mill rates, so we actually lowered your tax. Well, you didn't really lower the taxes because the house values went way up. So you can lower the mill rates and the taxes still go up. So when you look at these numbers here, you're going from 4.9 million to about 5.2 million in taxes. So you're actually, by approving this, you're voting on about a 6% tax increase. Inflation averages about 2.9% over the last 30 years. So you're doubling the inflation rate this year. I think that by voting and going with that number there, you're actually hurting the community because I don't think that 90% of this community can afford an extra $200, $300 a month. The people that aren't, that don't own property, they have to pay rent and that gets passed right through to them and it drives rent prices up too. So, I mean, you don't have to look far to see people struggling, especially in the school system right now. And I think that the new law that Karen Tyson sponsored and got passed and signed by the governor is great because when you guys vote to approve this, you guys are going on record voting to give us a 6% tax increase, twice, double what inflation is. So I just want to make everybody aware of that and put that on the public record. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions at this time?
David Sprinkle, 1222 East 8th Street here in Ottawa. I think it's fiscally irresponsible to approve this. For the last 15 years, there's been an increase in property taxes from the city, from the county, from the school board, 15 straight years. No population growth, zero. It's been flat and stagnant. We can't balance a budget or provide within that budget. I don't run my household that way. We have money coming in, we have to make sacrifices, we have to balance a budget. I don't get to go steal from my neighbor and say, well, I need this money to cover for it. I think it's ridiculous. Everybody has sacrificed over the last couple of years with the plandemic and everything else that's been going on. People have lost jobs, people have struggled, and now we're going to increase property taxes. For what? We continue to throw money at a problem rather than fixing the problem.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments at this time? All right, thank you.
Okay, so the resolution that you have in there in front of you is what has to go to KSDE in terms of your decision tonight, whether we maintain the course of action that we've currently set, which you saw the overall increase in tax, the lowering of the mill rate, or you choose not to, which means we reevaluate our budget and the issues that go from there. So this is the resolution that is associated with the revenue neutral rate.
Is we do need to take action on this? Is there a motion to approve the revenue neutral tax rate?
I do have a question, though. I mean, this was the, this was because appraised values went up, right?
Yeah.
So we're not the county appraisers, are we?
No.
So we got our information from the county appraiser and worked from that information?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So we didn't raise anything on this?
No. Well, yes, you raised LOB by .006, I think it was LOB, bond and interest by .006. We increased capital outlay by .003, but we reduced supplemental general by nearly .4 and subsequently related to a .35, I think, decrease in the overall mill levy.
Does any of that, any of our refinancing play into any of this?
Say that again.
Any of our refinancing that we did, would it play into any of this lowering?
Minimally.
Okay.
So at this time, is there an action to approve the revenue neutral tax rate?
I don't think, Madam President, that I'm ready to move forward with that. That's just my opinion.
If we don't move forward with it, what happens?
We don't approve our budget.
That we're supposed to approve tonight, right?
Tonight, yes.
And so I, if we don't approve this, then we go back to square one with our budget. And.
Yep.
And, I mean, this is, what I'm saying is, this is basically out of our hands. This is because of the appraisals that happened within the county, right?
That's what saw the increase in assessed valuation.
Right.
Yes, but ultimately, the budget is built off of where we're at, given those taxes. So given the knowledge of where we're at, if you would want to go back and make this revenue neutral with a no tax increase, you're going to redo your budget. You also have a negotiated agreement that you're set to approve tonight, which would impact that as well. All of those things would come into play. Terry, what's the deadline for budget and how, I don't even know what begins to happen at that point?
It's supposed to have an end by, I believe, the 25th of this month.
Yep.
So you would have to republish. I'm not even sure the timeframe.
Yep.
And so basically, we'd have to renegotiate teachers' salaries as well.
You would, yes. Certainly, we would not want to approve the negotiated agreement if we didn't approve our budget.
So there's a lot that rides on this.
Harold and Susan, did you have any comments about this?
No, I think you've, I had a couple of questions that you answered. I wanted to know again, the increases we were talking about and decreases, and Ryan went through that again, so.
Are you comfortable with moving forward with this tonight? Do you need more information? What are your thoughts? Harold, I'm asking you, you probably can't tell.
I'm sorry, what?
I asked what your thoughts were with moving forward with this tonight, or do you need some more information, or where are you at this point?
Do we, it sounded like to me that Terry was saying that we need the budget passed soon, right? We'd have to refinance, I mean, we'd have to republish and if we didn't move forward, is that right?
Yes. Susan, did you have any comments on this?
Well, I think, as Linda said, there's a lot riding on this. I don't think the increases are because of what we've set forward. I think it's because of what the appraisals have been in the county. That makes a difference to me because we have been good stewards of our resources. And we have reduced positions where we could, we have not increased positions, we have monitored our expenses, and we've refinanced bond and interest when we can. From my standpoint, I don't know that there's a lot else we can do.
Okay. All right, well, I will ask one more time if there's any action, if anyone would like to recommend that we approve the revenue neutral tax rate.
Well, I think we're kind of between a rock and a hard place, whether we do this or not. And it's not, none of this is really our fault, like Susan said. The appraiser appraised the property the way he or she saw it should be appraised, and we've done everything we can as a school board to be good stewards of our money. So this is just something that came to us. It's sort of out of our hands. And so if we don't approve it.
Our teachers.
Wow, we've got a lot of work to do. We've got to go back and renegotiate, we've got to redo the budget, so.
Well, I remember when we talked about the LOB because that feeds into getting monies from other places. We were really concerned that we were going to be able to reduce and not increase that mill rate because we had had those conversations about not wanting to increase that, so.
I, I think most recently, we've seen so much of this housing bubble. Everyone has heard, the housing prices are up, sell your house, you know, but then there's nowhere to move to because everything is so expensive. Also, the expense of any building materials has been up tremendously. So that's, this is an effect of the bubble, I think, and I think we're going to see that bubble burst.
And this doesn't raise our mill levy.
No.
It does not raise our mill levy at all.
No.
No.
That's what we've been striving for this whole time.
The part that we have, the part that we have an effect over is our mill levy. We don't have an effect over the bubble for housing prices. We just don't.
No, we don't.
So.
Okay.
So I guess.
All right.
I mean, to that, to that point, I guess I would make a motion that we, what was the motion? You want to accept the poke?
That we approve the revenue neutral tax rate.
Right, as you said.
And because of all the factors involved in that, I'm going to second that. I just don't think that, that the choices we have before us are anything other than to accept this.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please raise your hand. Two, three, four, five, and that passes 5-0. Thank you. All right, that's been approved and we will adjourn this meeting. Actually, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, and all in favor, please raise your hand. And that will adjourn that meeting at 5-0. Thank you.
I'm going to go right on to another one.
Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn?
Yes.
So we'll say Linda did.
Sure, I'll.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll do it.
I got one second.
Okay, maybe Chris firsted. Is firsted a word?
Did you second?
All right, so we are going to go ahead. Dean, are we still, we are still here. We are running a little bit behind, but we'll move on. We're going to call this second meeting to order. This is the budget hearing meeting, September 13th, 2021. We do have board members present, including Chris Cunningham, Linda Alderman, Harold Wingert, Susan Moore, and Julie Dandrio. If we can all just say present, please.
Present.
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 Thank you. We are currently missing two board members, Melodya Payne and Shanta Olmstead. So is there a motion to go ahead and approve tonight's agenda for this special meeting?
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 5-0 as well. Thank you. We have budget presentation. Dr. Kobs.
So Dean, if you'd show Form 140 for me. Last time, as we, as we met, we went through how the budget is projected for us, what it means, what the total budget is. So hopefully, from last time, you recognize the forms that we utilize to determine this and ultimately what it means, where the numbers come from. Dean, if you would go back there and do the comparison. So the reality of this is that we need to remember that the budget that is created for schools is not a real budget. It is your maximum authority to spend. You do not know what your true budget is until sometime in January or February typically. So you can see up there, as you look back here, you can see that the actual budget authority is greater than the actual expenditures. And so this comes after you have audits and determine exactly where your expenditures can take place. But you tend to estimate this high so you do not have to republish your budget and ultimately have the authority to spend that money, should that money be available for us to spend. But again, you can see from last year, we had the authority in our general fund to spend just a little under 17.4 million. Our actual expenditures came in under 17 million. This year, with the increase in base state aid per pupil, you see that number go up a little bit to just under 17.7 million. You will probably see that same discrepancy between those numbers here that you will see here when we get to the actual expenditures, when we go. If you scroll down there, you will see in nearly every one of those budgets, and actually I think all of them, a decrease in the actual authority versus the actual expenditure. And so only virtual came in at exactly the same amount. Capital outlay is different because a part of this is what we have available in capital outlay to spend versus what we identify as our expenditures each year. And then you can see the rest of them follow the same suit. So our PD was way down last year in part because we were in the midst of COVID and we weren't sending people everywhere. But in essence, this is what happens within our budget, is that we create a legal maximum authority to spend, should the money be available for us to expend it, and then we address our expenditures as we know more about those accounts. That's ultimately the way that the school budget works. You guys can, and Dean, if you would show the budget at a glance, through this document, you will actually see where those expenditures overall, or at least the budgets are allocated for each area in terms of how much goes to instruction, how much goes to, and there you can see right there, your overall budget. You can see that 53% actually goes to instruction, actually more than that if you count all of these that are involved in instruction. This change is based upon what we saw in our actual expenditures versus what is budgeted this year. Again, the budget is based upon numbers that we have the legal authority to spend, not necessarily what we are going to spend. So you'll see that number come down. But ultimately, the budget at a glance identifies where those expenditures will be, or at least we expect them to be, until we go through the entire auditing process and make it, make it through to that point. Okay? Any questions on the budget? If not, I'll step aside.
All right, thank you. At this time, we'll hear any questions or comments from district patrons.
Jason Burvey, 3937 Louisiana Road here in Ottawa. I think it's, this thing's kind of set up weird where, like, the district gets the opening argument and then you ask for public comment and then they get to do like another closing argument on the back end of that. And I think going through this whole budget, you guys just kind of tied yourself up in knots up there and set this precedent that you're going to totally go off the appraiser now. So if the bubble does pop and we see a 20% reduction in property taxes, then we see a 20% reduction in the budget, right? Because in years past, when this has happened, all you guys do is raise the mill levy to match it or make it even, make it more. And so the whole idea behind the bill that was passed that Karen Tyson sponsored was to add transparency to the process. Nobody knows what a mill levy is. Nobody knows how to calculate the mill rates unless you have like a master's in accounting degree. And, and you guys just voted on a 6% increase. That's the brass tax. You voted on a 300,000 or so increase in the budget. And this is on the heels of many, many, many increases. This district's been extremely generous when they passed the school bond and everything else that we got, we had added on to our taxes, and you guys are still increasing the other part of it 6%. And so there's a spending issue here. I'm not saying, don't increase it, let the teachers have raises and stuff, but keep it in pace with inflation. You guys are doubling inflation here. So I don't, I don't see why you guys can't look at the budget. It's not like you have to go back to square one. You just have to trim 3% off. And that puts you right in pace with inflation and sets a better precedent going forward, a more responsible precedent as far as taxes and stuff go. Because we, Franklin County as a whole, when you, when you add everything up as a resident in this district, we have, we have some of the highest taxes in the state and in the country. I mean, we have some of the highest tax overall in the country when you add everything up. When you look at the total taxation across everything, and so the district's part of the problem, the county's part of the problem, the city's part of the problem, and everybody keeps increasing these things way past the pace of inflation. You look 20 years back and you'll see that the school mill levy, the school taxes, their part of it, has increased 20 times the rate of inflation over the last 20 years. That means you guys are consistently ahead of inflation every year. And I think that it's time. We don't need to tie ourselves up in knots. They made it simple. At the end of the year, the state looks at what the total dollar amount was in taxes and they readjust the mill levy rate so that it equals that. So the mill levy rate does change, the state caps it, but it's to make the dollar amounts the same because that's where we, it doesn't matter what the mill levy is if we're having to pay more money over here. So that's, that's the whole point of it. And so you can say, okay, well, the property values went up. Well, that means that you're just taking advantage of the proper, of a crazy real estate market right now. It doesn't, it doesn't change because I don't think anybody, real estate values went up 20%, but I don't know very many people that got 20% raises on their income this year. I know a lot of people that haven't got any raises. I know some people that have lost their jobs. And we're, we're going to continue adding ahead of the inflation rate, ahead of the people's raises, just because their house went up. Maybe they can sell their garage door or sell, sell the garage off their house and be able to afford the extra in taxes because these are dwellings they have to live in. It doesn't matter what the value is right now. This district's taking advantage of an increase in something that they can't pull money out of without getting out, out the door or taking a loan. So I think that that needs to be taken account. And so we, you guys just voted on a 6% increase after we've done a school bond, after we just increased probably more than that percentage wise last year, and the year before that, and the year before that. So taxes at some point either need to cap or they need to get closer with inflation because we are, we have a spending issue here and it's not translating to results. So we need to look at that. I think that it's time that you guys do take a look at it. There's no reason that you guys can't have a meeting and trim 3% off. It's not, it's not back to square one. It's just find some stuff that's discretionary. There's a lot, I mean, there's discretionary spending everywhere. Find some stuff that is discretionary, that people can live without and get it, get it at least in pace with inflation. We have to set that precedent at some point. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your comment. All right. So at this time, do we have a motion to approve?
Could anybody else speak?
I'm sorry, I thought we were, I didn't see you sneak up there. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I'm quiet. I'm unadversive.
Go ahead and tell me your name and your address.
I'm Brent Fredericks, 1526 South Cedar here in Ottawa. I think what needs to be pointed out, just for the record, is that you all have made a real, a real world decision based on a paper evaluation that is subject to change. And the member over here made a fantastic argument for why you shouldn't have voted the way you did. the way you did, and then you turned right around and voted that way anyway. We're living in the real world and you're spending real money. And you're basing that decision on an appraisal that if you look at all of the leading indicators, October 15th is coming quick. That's when third quarter earnings for all of the major corporations in this country are out. And she made a perfect encapsulation of what's coming down the railroad track at us right now. We're going to get hit. And so now we're going to have a bubble that has burst, and that appraisal is going to be in the crapper because it's not going to be worth the paper it was printed on. And yet we're all going to be still having, we're all going to be on the hook for the same amount of money regardless. And as Jason said, all you have to do is look at the top line 3%, find that money and trim it. But it's important that you people understand that you made a real-world decision that we all have to live with based on pretend numbers that aren't going to be the same numbers six months from now. Before this year is out, that will be worthless. I just want to make sure that that's on the record and you all realize that when you leave tonight. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Do you guys have proposed budget in front of you? You've had it for several weeks to review at this point. So at this point, it's to you guys.
Well, it's not really the budget. It's the maximum spending limit.
Yes.
I really think it has a bad name because it's under our budget.
Certainly it does. It's your legal authority.
It's our legal authority. Exactly. Is there a motion to approve the legal authority as presented?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand.
I'm so sorry. Can, can you tell me exactly what we're voting on?
Yes, on the maximum spending limit. The numbers that, right, that we will eventually come down, be above what our actual budget is.
It's not the revenue?
No.
No.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay. Are you, yes, okay. So that passes 6-0 because we've now added Melodya Payne to our group. All right. Is there a motion to adjourn this portion of the meeting or this meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 6-0 as well. All right. That meeting is adjourned. We are already at 7:01, so I guess, Dean, we're just going to keep on going here? Or do we need to?
We want to do one more change for cars, and they won't do it.
Okay. Well, it's seven o'clock, so I think we're.
Who's the sixth?
What's that?
Who's the sixth?
Susan.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
You were questioning my counting, weren't you? All right. Dean, do we need to switch to a different link? Are we good?
We're good.
We're good. Okay. All right. So let me make sure I'm on the right one here. Welcome to the September 13th, 2021 Board of Education Regular Meeting. It is 7:01 PM. We'll call this meeting to order and do a quick roll call. Shanda Olmstead is absent. Chris Cunningham.
Here.
Linda Alderman.
Present.
Harold Wingert.
Present.
Melodya Payne.
Present.
Susan Moore.
Present.
Julie Dandrio also present. Please join me and stand and say the Clutch of Allegiance.
Clutch of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 6-0. We are moving on to consent agenda. These are items, nothing in particular that needs to be brought forward. You've all been given these to review previously. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second? Who, who took the motion on that?
Krista.
Okay. And Susan was the second. All right. Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 6-0. We are down to comments from the public. We do have three comments this evening. The first one is from Rebecca Schmoey. She would like to talk about update on COVID protocols. As you come up, I'm going to read this information here. Parents and taxpayers of USC 290 who desire to address the board on any topic related to board work are welcome to do so at this time. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than five minutes. Do appoint a spokesperson if their concern is a group concern and to supplement verbal presentation with written reports if necessary or desired. Public comments critical of an individual are not acceptable. Please note the board will listen to the public comment but will not respond. The board may direct the superintendent to follow up at a later date when questions asked or concerns raised. Welcome, Rebecca. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'm joining you a month after I joined you last time. Last time, I asked something of you, and I'm just here for follow-up. From the last time, quote, "My demand from you, now that you've had the opportunity to read studies and hear studies that show the dangers of masking children, is that you provide a study, not an opinion, not an article, not a social media post, but an actual study which proves that masking children pre-K through high school makes any real and positive difference in reducing the spread of COVID-19." Do you have a study? Is there a study that shows that what we're doing is doing our students any actual positive good? Oh, I've, I've sent everyone emails. You all have my email address. I asked for a study to prove that what we are doing is beneficial to our children. Not a single one of you got back to me. So as far as public servant, I'm the public right here. You guys are the public servants, and the public has asked you to do something. I've asked for you to provide information that shows that what we're doing is beneficial to our students. Nothing? They had a month to answer. Just so we're all clear, a month to answer.
Most of the students that attend this district would say no. I've talked to a lot of them. Most of them said they took their mask off.
We are waiting for Rebecca's comments. Please let her speak.
I will finish up by saying that I do not spend my personal time after working all day here at a meeting with you guys instead of being at home with my students for the fun of it. I don't come here to hear myself talk. I come here because it's important for me to be involved with people who are making decisions in regards to my students. That's my part of the job as the public. You have failed to do your part of the job. I'm thoroughly disappointed in my school board, and I will actively be seeking your replacements. Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Sprinkle. He's going to talk about property tax increase and medical autonomy.
Well, I already said my piece about the property tax. I spent most of my morning trying to write down what I wanted to say. I'm frustrated, I'm saddened, and I'm somewhat amused. One, that you think you have the authority and the power over me and my kids, and you don't. Individually, I don't have the power or the authority to decide what you do for your medical care. Your power and your authority is derived from and by the people. So if I don't have that power to begin with, then you don't have that power as elected officials. You do not have my consent, and you do not have authority over me or my kids. And I don't care what you put on paper. I don't care what protocols you put in the school. I've told my kids to do what they please. If you don't feel comfortable, take it off. I'll deal with the consequences. They're my kids. 10 years ago, my wife was pregnant with our youngest child. I fired a pediatrician because I didn't agree with him. That was our choice. He's healthy because we chose to do that. We have medical autonomy. I don't know if you've read the Nuremberg Code. Article 6, Section 1 and 3, free and informed consent. The CDC has a guideline. There's nowhere in the Constitution does it state that we have to follow those guidelines. What we're following is based off the CARES Act grant money because that's what's important, right? Money. That dictates what the, the whole mass thing. It's not that we actually have a vote or we actually have a say. We took government money, so now we're stuck with the government's decision. It's crazy. It's ridiculous. I don't consent to it, not going to, irregardless. I look at all the money that we keep floating in this budget, and I've got a dyslexic child that I've been fighting for since the second grade to teach her how to read efficiently, train teachers, get the necessary protocols. But then I look at this $5.5 million ESAR grant funds. We're spending $900,000 to babysit kids while they sit 20 extra minutes in a classroom working on a computer application. Lexi Pro and iXL, they can do that at home. But let me guess, in-person learning's important, right? $900,000 to pay that extra 20 minutes. $130,000 for the programs. $70,000 for an extra nurse at Garfield. $70,000 for an extra fifth-grade teacher at Lincoln Elementary School to make the classes smaller. I want my child to read. You want to get into medical care? Then step down, resign, and go apply at the board, at the hospital. Our education system is failing, and no one is holding them accountable. They work for you, not the other way around. Ask the tough questions. Hold them accountable. Why is 3/4 of our kids Level 2 or lower? Can't efficiently or effectively do math for career in post-secondary education? I've looked at the numbers. We're the worst in our school district, in our county. Towards the bottom in the state. Let's focus on education. That's what we're here for. Get out of the healthcare business.
Yes. Woo!
I'm done.
Hello. Bristi Foltz, 1239 South Mulberry in Ottawa. Just came to report some numbers again for you guys. 25,544 people in this county. As of today, 106 positive COVID cases, which makes the percent of positive in our county .004%. We're masking our kids for .004% positivity. Every, every meeting, I'm going to come at you with these numbers because you aren't given these numbers to make a decision. You're masking healthy children with a 99.98% survival rate. You're masking them for that. 99, it's, I don't even know what it is. It's so high, I don't even look at it anymore. I also came to talk to you about the vaccine adverse event report systems on the CDC's website. I don't know if any of you have heard of this. You probably should check it out because it tells you all the adverse events from this vaccine that they are now promoting amongst all of you because you work for a district of more than 100 people, so you have to be vaccinated and you don't have a choice according to your district. So you probably should check that out before you go get a vaccine. And I wanted to pose some questions to you in regards to the COVID testing and protocols with the mask optional because I didn't see it until about, I don't know what time the testing protocol was posted. I didn't get an email from the district about what they were, we're not going to do. I know you can't answer a question, but I, does anybody, did anybody get an email from the district on the COVID testing protocol? Okay. On the agenda for today, you have to go into the board meeting, then you have to click on the agenda, and then you have to click on this, and you have to click on something else, and that is where that is. They don't, they didn't send it out yet, I don't think. Dr. Cobbs, did it get sent out yet? No. Are they voting on that tonight? Are they voting on like instating it? So how does that work? It just, we just discuss on it? And then the grant, is that a discussion as well again? I guess I don't know. It's, it's hard as a, it's hard as a parent here to decipher what is actually being voted on because it isn't put out in front of us to understand. So last meeting, I guess, since I guess you can answer questions, which is great because they can't answer any questions. So last meeting, they voted to pass the COVID mask optional, or mask option if it stays under 3% of the student body population in addition to the KDHE COVID-19 protocol, correct? I know that was kind of lengthy. Last meeting, they voted KDHE grant, and then we could do mask optional.
I'll address that piece in my piece. I think the point of this is.
They, they can't answer any of my questions, Dr. Cobbs. So I'm, I'm asking you what they're, are they going to be voting on something tonight as a parent in this district, should we have known if they were going to be voting on something?
There was no action tonight.
No action tonight. Okay. And where would the parents find this so we can educate ourselves here tonight? So if we are interested on what's going on, it would be under what section? Are you, are you doing that? No? Who's, who's doing?
It's just that the 6.01 is simply discussion.
Just discussion. But was that under action then the other night when you guys voted? No. I just, I want the parents to be informed of what's going on. So that was the last meeting, and it was voted on. Action. Okay. So this is so confusing for all the parents. I don't know if, it might not be confusing to board members that have been on boards for years, but it's really confusing to all of these parents here. It's so confusing. So I don't know if there's a better way, Dr. Cobbs, to address this. So I don't know if there's a better way, Dr. Cobb, to address this so that we can be informed, parents in our district. Is there a way we can do that in the future?
Certainly.
Okay. I know my time is up.
Yeah, this is all vaccines. That's all it is.
I just, I want the parents in this district to be able to be informed of what these board members are voting on so that they can show up and address the board on important things because right now, it's going to get really hairy with the vaccine. And we need to know when we need to be here to tell them what we would like them to vote on.
Thank you, Bristi. All right. I have one email to read tonight. This looks like it was written on August 9th. With regard to the mask for this...
Can you speak up, please?
With regard to mask for the school year, I would love to see the school board side with parents in the view that they can determine what is best for their child. I can understand the concern, but there are also concerns with wearing a mask all day as well. The kids have gone all summer at multi-activities in and out of school with no masks. If the board feel the need to require them, maybe a good alternative is wearing masks in hallways between classes and removing them when seated. Thank you for the opportunity to share my hopes for this topic this upcoming school year. Thank you, Mimi Turner. So we are down to reports and presentations. Dr. Cobb, section 5.01, enrollment number update.
Okay, so this should go fairly quickly. I just wanted to give you an update from where we were at last year in terms of our enrollment numbers. Currently, we're sitting at, maybe scroll across to the side there, about 2191 students, which again, we have seen declining enrollment over the time. We continue to see some of that declination in enrollment, although more students than we had last year. But we're going to stabilize probably about this number right there as we're about halfway through the first quarter already. Again, you can see that the high school, for the most part, has been pretty stable. Middle school has seen a slight increase, mostly with that sixth grade class. We continue to see that elementary group have smaller class sizes in general. But ultimately, that's just an update on enrollment numbers.
Thank you. Board members, do you have any questions on that? All right. Thank you, Dr. Cobb. All right. Moving on to section 5.02, the Kansas Khan Initiative.
Okay, so Dr. Watson came in and had a conversation with about 50 members of our community two weeks ago. Dean, if you'd click on that and open it up for me. So just, do I have control of this thing? There we go. So there are a couple of things that he talks about his tour and the things that he went on, but I think there were some public comment out here tonight that addresses, that was addressed by some of the things that Dr. Watson indicated and some of the things that we've been trying to accomplish here. First and foremost, as they talk to employers across the state, it is less about academic skills and more about personal skills that they are looking for in their evaluation of students post-high school. And in this particular graphic, you see that from the first focus group, about 70% of all of the skills that employers were looking for were non-academic in nature. When they talk to the actual industry folks, that increased from 70% to 81%. So again, there's a fairly significant change in terms of the academic skills that are measured versus the employability skills that people are looking for. And that was the crux of the conversation that Dr. Watson was having, as well as the whole notion behind this school redesign initiative that began now five years ago, I believe. So we get back into redesign. And I wanted to bring up a couple of things as we look at this. And it's really about this piece and what our strategic plan looks like. So that first little arrow there, it talks about needing quality preschool, including all-day kindergarten. It has just been recent that they actually funded all-day kindergarten. I think we were ahead of the pace in that one. But this has been a part of our strategic plan in making sure that we address birth-to-pre-K programming. You saw some of that with the expansion into Osage County, dealing with tiny K. But even in our own realm, trying to address the birth-to-pre-K portion of our early learning has been significant. And when you look at the kindergarten exams, you can see that there's been a substantial increase in those entry level scores coming in. So as we start looking at our data, we can see that what we've been doing from a birth-to-pre-K standpoint is beginning to have an impact. Prior to that, I think this board and those members of our board that are no longer here would indicate specifically through the MAP assessment that our kids always had a significant gap coming into school. That gap is beginning to narrow, and we begin to address it in some different ways. Certainly, the next arrow is about addressing culture. We have seen through multiple studies, specifically the Kansas Community Care Study, that this is beginning to change as well. Students are certainly appreciating being in school more. School is a better place for our kids to be now than it had been in the past. But you also see this in terms of our enrollment. When you look at the high school enrollment, you can see that it has become very consistent across the board, where if you'd looked at that six, seven years ago, you would see a huge decline from the freshman enrollment numbers to the senior enrollment numbers. And most of that is due to dropouts or transitions and some other situations. We don't have that anymore. Over the course of the last 10 years, you've seen our district go from a 70% graduation rate to over a 90% graduation rate. So certainly increasing the achievement and the success of our students as we go through that, and those cultures are being, or those changes are being made in our school culture. Counselor and social workers, again, as we bring this back to what is happening within our strategic plan. Part of that strategic plan was hiring social workers. Part of it was expanding our counseling program, and part of it goes back to the next role, which is the red one, and making sure that we have counselors that are there to address specifically the connection between our students and our industry. Those things are beginning to change as well, so much so that KSDE is having conversations with us about what that blueprint should look like. And when I say us, I'm not talking about schools, I'm talking about Ottawa schools. So certainly, there are some benefits there. Reorganizing schools around the students, not the system. This is really about creating flexibility in the way that we attend school. This is why we're talking about a drop schedule at the middle school, allowing kids to take more elective classes than they were able to before. It's why we're talking about a flex mod schedule at the high school, that not every kid needs 51 minutes of chemistry to be successful in chemistry, and they may better be suited in some other areas of time in terms of what their day looks like. That flex mod schedule is going to be a huge piece of what we begin to do moving forward. But all of those things are centered within the strategic plan with a definitive outline as to when we should accomplish those things and how we should accomplish those things. And within that blueprint for us, this is what KSDE is beginning to say, this is what school should look like. The piece that we really haven't begun to address as of yet is the community service piece, although I think we're better at this now than we were in the past. COVID certainly began to impact what we were doing. You saw Garfield doing more things within the community, saw Lincoln doing more things within the community. The high school has always had a fairly significant role in community service based upon their clubs and the other activities. But that needs to expand for us, and certainly, it's a big piece of what we need to do, and hopefully, at some point, we can get back to that. But all of those things, those six ideas right there that Dr. Watson, as the commissioner of education, was indicating, this should be the focus of our schools. They are each identified within our strategic plan, created by teachers, created by community members, created by the Board of Education, created by our administrators. All of them had a hand in making sure that that worked. Subsequently, we're beginning to see the benefits of doing so. So those of you that got to see Dr. Watson, some of you actually were, what is the word? Quoted in their recent update for being there. And certainly, there's a benefit to being able to host those events and having Dr. Watson be able to come in and see the amazing things that we're doing in Ottawa schools. So thank you all for being there. Does anybody have any questions about what Dr. Watson was saying and how we're tying to that within our strategic plan?
I don't have any questions, but as I watched his presentation, you know, I was thinking, wow, we're doing that. We are doing that. And that was affirming. I do have a question about the community service in that it was brought up at our table, that when some people come back from overseas and the kids have been in international schools, community service is a big part of the International Baccalaureate program. And the only place they could do that was in Topeka, I believe. And so international students had to go to Topeka to get that. And I hear just that there are more schools offering that International Baccalaureate besides Topeka. Is that true?
I don't know who offers the IB. There's a number of different assurances that you have to have in order to teach IB courses and have an IB program. It is similar to, you know, there are other classes, like Lewisburg offers IB courses, I think. Maybe it's not IB. But certainly, some other courses that are then associated with college courses that are associated with college prep courses, and ultimately, they nest them all together is really what we're getting at. So all of those students taking those upper-level courses are all sitting in the same classrooms. For Ottawa, we've always identified that having multiple levels of that is not necessarily where we've been because we basically offer collegiate courses for free. So we've pushed that upper-level piece into the Neosho County realm, the college credit level courses, and that's what we've offered. The IB course is certainly something else to consider, though.
Any other questions from the board members? All right. We are going down to 6.01, an update on the COVID protocols and testing.
Okay. So there was a lot of conversation out here, and we'll try to address some of these things. So Dean, let's start with, yeah, we can start with this. So the testing procedures is what we've been working with KDHE on. It is a pretty slow process. We just received our testing kits late last week, and now we have to go through the training process to make sure that we can all begin to administer them. There's a lot of pieces that have to go into this. One is a CLIA waiver. So ultimately, this basically indicates that we have the ability to provide a testing regimen within our systems. We have applied for our own CLIA waiver. Currently, the Franklin County Health Department would allow us to work under their CLIA waiver. So as we work through those things, the CLIA is not going to be the thing that denies us the opportunity to get started. We can work under FCHD's certificate, but we do have an application in to receive our own certificate, which will ultimately be a benefit for us as we start working through that. There are two different types of tests. We're only going to do one of the tests. The other one, we will farm out to the county health department. That is the onsite antigen test. So one of the things that we have to remember is that about seven months ago, the antigen test was one that was identified as not being a great assessment of a true positive. That continues to be the case with this assessment. It is an antigen test. They are recommending that for every positive antigen test, that there is a PCR test that follows it. So this is essentially a screener and probably should not be utilized as the main determinant as to whether or not somebody has been diagnosed with COVID or not. It is not the intention of the school to be the diagnostic. We should probably not be the ones telling somebody that they have COVID. So as we go through this, one of the things that we think about with this particular test is that it is a nasal swab. It is not the deep swab. It is around-the-nose swab. Students, for the most part, can give it to themselves as long as they're monitored. So probably K through three should not, four through 12 ought to be able to do it themselves. Take it out of their nose, put it in the other nostril, back out of their nose. The nurse or whoever is providing the test will take three droplets or six droplets and put in this little booklet that they have. The swab then goes in the booklet. It is closed, it is sealed, and within 15 minutes, it will either have one line or two lines that tells you that it is positive or negative. It's fairly easy to read. As we test those kids, ultimately, what we will do is we'll identify to parents that they have a positive test. It's not our intention to tell them that they have COVID. It is our intention to tell them they have a positive test, and they need to be referred to the county health department for the PCR test. They will then utilize that as the diagnostic to determine whether or not they actually have COVID or they do not have COVID. So those are the real differences between what we're doing. Again, we are screening students. We are not diagnosing students. Two completely different things. So the real question is who should be tested, and this is what we got to, and this is what we've been working through. The initial piece, even though they call it a diagnostic, is actually a screener, right? So we would screen kids with any symptoms. And this is the first step in this, and it's probably going to take us a week or two to get our feet underneath this as we learn how to do this within our student body. But any student that comes to school and identifies specific symptoms, whether it's I have a sore throat and a runny nose and a headache and whatever it happens to be, our nurses have a list of things that they can identify as these are COVID symptoms. If you only have one of them, probably not needing the screener. If you have multiple symptoms, probably going to go ahead and screen you as long as parents approve of the test, right? So as we go through that, we deal with students who have symptoms. Again, as we test the students with symptoms, we learn more about the testing process. Any positive tests are then referred to the county health department for diagnostics. Any negative tests remain in school. If they're developing symptoms, they probably should be wearing a mask under CDC guidelines. At least currently, everybody's in a mask, so everybody would continue in that process. Okay? The next piece of that is dealing with students who are identified as close contacts. So this is where it gets to be a little more substantial. Currently, we wouldn't have a lot of students, about 20 students at each building, that would be identified as close contacts, which is not overwhelming, but it is certainly a larger volume of students to deal with. Within those close contacts, according to KDHE, they would have to be tested for seven straight days. So the question is, when do they get tested and who is testing them? At this point, if it remains in the volume that it is now, we could probably do so with our nursing staff, maybe with some aides and some other people. If it grows much, we're probably going to need some other supports. But as that happens, it's the same process. We go through the test, they've got to wait for 15 minutes. We get the results of their test. If those tests are negative, then they go back to class, they continue to wear their mask, they continue to participate. If they don't pass the test, if it shows up as a positive test, we refer them on to the county health department for further diagnostics, okay? And then the last piece of that is the high-risk programming. So this would be any programs in which would, students would be not wearing a mask. So this would be football practices, possibly band, choir, so on and so forth. If at any point in time, a student within those systems tests positive or begins to exhibit symptoms, and we test based upon the symptoms, then everybody within that group then falls within the testing protocol because they're identified as close contacts in a high-risk situation, right? So if we're talking about athletes, what the recommendation is at this point is that the sport shuts down for three days. So no longer able to attend practice, those types of things, there's no practice whatsoever for three days. Testing regimen gets starts as long as everybody is negative on the test, and after three days, we can go back to practicing. If we have positives, then those people are pulled out of the team functions, they're quarantined, whatever it happens to be, because they now have a positive test if verified by Franklin County Health Department. And those that are not positive, go back to practice and team functions, but only after three days, and then everybody within that group tests for seven days, okay? Now, that doesn't seem like much until you start thinking about 65 kids on a football team, plus 35 kids on a soccer team, plus 35 kids on a volleyball team, and only one issue creating a volume of additional expectations for staff. That becomes significant, certainly not a reason not to do it, but certainly something that we have to overcome, okay? So again, our test, our screener test, we are not intended to be the diagnostic. Any positive screener test then goes to the county health department for further review. If parents are opting into the test, and again, not everybody has to be in the protocol, but if you choose to opt out, then the quarantine guidelines are in effect, right? If you opt into the testing protocol, then we'll talk about what those guidelines are here in just a bit. If you test positive, then the quarantine guidelines come into effect, okay? If you choose not to go to the county health department, you're still not going to be allowed to come back to school. We're not going to tell you that you have to go get a PCR test, but if you choose not to, you don't get to come back under the KDHE guidelines, okay? So that's, not everybody has to participate, not everybody has to go get a PCR test. It's their choice, they can make that choice. Just need to understand that should they not follow all of those protocols... that should they not follow all of those protocols, then under KDHE guidelines, they don't return to school.
What do you do after December 31st?
Okay, so, we have two-
If you all could please, you're welcome to observe our meeting. But if you have questions, you're welcome. You're welcome to email Dr. Cobb with your questions after the meeting. Thank you.
Also like to point out that districts not in line with official action taken in the last meeting has a start of this meeting.
So, two different options for us in terms of the reporting portal. We're expected to use the lab exchange. So, any test that we provide through KDHE has to go into the lab exchange, and we go from there. Okay? We'll have to train our staff on how to do that and what we need to do. And certainly, we can go through all of those things. But this goes back to the diagnostic piece. We're not going to refer to it as a diagnostic. That's a KDHE term. We'll simply utilize it as a screener. This is what we do in Phase One. We're going to test students with symptoms predominantly provided for by school nursing staff. Once grant is approved, we'll try to hire additional staff to address with the overflow of testing that may exist. But at some point in time, what we know is that we'll have parents that will tell us, hey, my kid's exhibiting symptoms. Can you provide the test so we know so that we don't have to go to OFP or wherever it happens to be initially, so they can get a screener test upfront? We may have to consider doing some drive-up testing and doing some different things. We also will have a room in every building in which we call it, we'll call it the IQ Room, which stands for, I forgot what the I is, something in quarantine. But ultimately, as we go through that, they'll have a space where they can be, and then we'll go from there. But all of our students will have a place to be as we begin to test. The test to stay is for those that are identified as close contacts. Again, the number is pretty minimal. With a mask mandate, it is going to go up if there is not, just based upon how close contacts work. That much is definitive. It can be done throughout the day according to KDHE. So, they don't all have to be done prior to school. We can do them throughout the day. For the most part, our nurses can handle this unless we have a larger volume. And then, of course, the test to play, the test to participate based upon other activities. Okay? Any questions from our board on this?
Just the board.
Okay.
I had a couple of questions. So, I just, I got a little confused when you said, when you were talking about the athletic situation, the scenarios that you said. The reason when you started, when you decide to test the whole team, what happened right before that? What was the situation?
If you either had somebody that was exhibiting symptoms and they tested positive, or they were outside of it and tested positive.
So, there has to be a positive.
The other part of that is that if we play a team that has a positive, and ultimately, the entire team is identified as close contacts.
But there was a positive to start that test?
Yes.
Okay, that was my first question.
No mask.
Okay.
On the field.
So, I had a couple of questions about the symptoms that you're talking about and then, like, the nurse deciding to test students during the day.
Yes.
So, last year, you worked with the health department to kind of organize ways to identify and distinguish between allergies and illness. So, would we still be doing that? Because, I mean, allergies are very high and they're on that list.
All of our nurses currently are still working through those same protocols. So, if we know that this is the time a child typically is displaying allergy symptoms, we're certainly going to know that. They'll take that into account as they move forward. We're not going to test any kid without parental consent. So, even if they sign an opt-in form, we're probably, we're still going to communicate with parents before we give any kid an assessment.
You will?
So, yes.
Even if you fill out the opt-in form, you would still be contacted before you-
Yes. Yep.
Okay. Not like every day during the seven days?
No. So, if you're on the seven days, we're going to contact parents and make sure that you want to opt into the seven days. Yeah. So, the opt-in form really is just documentation that says, yes, we're allowing this. We're still going to communicate to parents that you're going to allow us to test.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Dean, click on the testing protocol piece. Okay, so, this is, again, what begins to happen within the testing protocol, okay? So, you have tests due to symptoms, tests due to exposure, and they're a little bit different, okay? So, if we're testing due to symptoms, this is what happens within the protocol. Students, if it's a positive test for us, they're referred to the Franklin County Health Department for the PCR test. If they are negative, student can attend school at nurse's discretion. So, this is no different than anything else. If student is exhibiting a fever, if they're doing those types of things, those are within our policies to tell parents that they should probably go home for the day, make sure they take care of their illnesses. They should monitor their symptoms, encourage to consult a physician, and test it again at some point in time if those symptoms persist, right? So, if we're three or four days into it and the symptoms haven't subsided, they may come in to test again. But again, we would have that conversation with parents before we did any of it. If we're testing due to exposure, so this is due to close contact, again, if it's positive, we're referring you to the county health department. If it's negative, students can continue to attend school, but they have to wear a mask, and that mask is mandatory. It is also, even if we relax through KDHE, if we relax our masking protocols and the testing procedure, they have to wear masks to everything, including athletics. So, if you're on the football team and you're getting into the testing protocol, you still have to wear a mask. You still have to do all of those things, even within the act of competition. So, and that's a KDHE guideline. So, must monitor for symptoms, must test negative for seven days, and then if we continue to see symptoms, we move on. At any point in time there's a positive test, refer back to county health department. So, if we're testing for seven days and on day four, we have a positive test, we go back to the county health department for referral. Okay?
I have a question about the seven days. Should the seven days fall in a weekend? What, how do they do that?
So, if it falls on the seven, or on the weekend, those days are still identified as consecutive days. They don't have to come in to be tested. We're going to test them on the Monday when we return. So, if Friday is day four, Monday, or Friday or Saturday and Sunday are five and six, Monday is day seven, as long as they're negative on day seven, they're still good to go. If day seven falls on a Sunday, then we'll test them on day eight, make sure that we don't have any issues. We'll go from there. Okay? Dean, if you'd look at the informed consent form. So, this is what we've been working with our attorneys on to make sure that we can address this. This would go out to parents. We have it ready to go out to parents, but wanted to make sure that the board had an opportunity to provide some insight on it before we go down that path. The top part of it is basically off of KDHE and the different aspects that we have to address within KDHE. And if you scroll down there, Dean, you see the three different options that are within our district. The first is the test to know, test to stay and learn, test to stay and play and participate. So, those are the three different options that we had decided. And then, it identifies the things that parents agree to and providing their consent to test, right? And so, there's nothing in there that's crazy. But those are the legalities of providing the assessment within our building. That would go out digitally. What we would get is a list of all the students that would be approved for the testing protocol. Again, it just gives us the documentation that we have approval. Still be communicating with parents before we provided any test. So, again, if a student comes into the nurse's office and says, hey, I'm sick, even if they've approved through the testing protocol that it's okay to test, we're still going to call parents and say, hey, Julie is in here with a runny nose and a sore throat. We have the opportunity to test. Would you like us to do so? If they say yes, we'll provide the test. If they say no, say, here are the symptoms. You need to monitor these things. Do what we need to do. Okay? So, we talked about quarantine. Dean, the quarantine scenario, this is something that I think is important for all of us to recognize in terms of what happens in a masking situation and a non-masking situation, right? You saw this in the board update, and I would again say that there are some liberties with this scenario. Certainly, things change with this. But we start talking about volumes of kids that could be impacted by this and how the testing protocols swell into something that could be unmanageable, and why you see other districts, Mays, Turner is too, that currently have done it, move out of a mask optional and into a mask mandate with the guidelines in place for testing because they couldn't meet the requirements of the mask optional piece. And it was due to these types of situations. So, we don't typically sit in this like in our schools anymore, but I did this just for a visual effect. These are students in classrooms, five students to a row, basically 25 kids in class. We don't typically have classes that are 25 kids anymore, but you get the just of what is occurring here, right? So, this is a student who comes in who is positive in this environment. You see the red person right there, okay? So, as that person comes into the environment in a mask mandate, none of these people are identified as close contacts under CDC or Franklin County Health Guidelines because they're masked. So, subsequently, when we go through the contact tracing procedures, we don't typically have to send kids home or to the county health department or anything else for quarantine. They basically remain in school. Okay? And a mask optional, again, if we identify that this is a student who is not masked, right? So, again, there are liberties with this assessment, but if you recognize it for what it is. If this person is not masked, even if all of these students are, under CDC guidelines, because both parties are not masked, they would be considered close contacts, right? So, each of these kids would then be identified under the testing protocol that they would need to go into a seven-day window of testing, or choose to be quarantined for seven to 10 days with a test in between, however they choose to do it. Okay? If we have one positive student with no mask, and we have eight students in close contact with seven periods, that brings up the opportunity for 56 students in close contact to that one student. If we have six positive cases in that scenario, it results in 300-plus kids in a possible testing scenario. That's what we have to consider when we identify how this could begin to impact our learning situation once we fully implement the testing procedures. Okay?
Our situation is affecting the recruiting situation more than anything.
I'm sorry, can you please hold your comments? If you have comments, you can email them after the meeting. Okay? Thank you.
I have a question. I know that you have, like, superintendent meetings and things within our league. Like, I just came from Baldwin for the volleyball game. And so, theirs is only, like, 11 and under, like, 2 to 11 for wearing, or, yeah, for wearing masks. So, and then I know there's other, some other schools that are in our league that are not requiring masks. Have you heard updates within your superintendent meetings or whatever, how they are doing and how they're handling things?
Yes. We met last week. It looks like Douglas County is going all back to mask mandates. Those things will be questioned at each individual building. Paola has not started yet. They're still waiting on some questions before they go. Udora has started. Tong and Oxy, I believe, is just getting ready to start. They filled out their application. I think Udora may be the only one that's fully implemented to this point. Everybody else is lagging behind.
And they're being able to keep up and?
Yeah, according to them. Yeah, they were doing okay.
I just wondered, you had mentioned other schools that weren't. So, I just wondered if, here, look.
Yeah. So, Dean, I think, yeah, so, this is the quarantine guidelines, and these are the things that would change within the guidelines provided by Franklin County Health Department. So, this is currently the guidelines without a testing policy. What happens within a testing policy is that if there's an exposure right here, fully vaccinated person is properly, or not fully vaccinated, but they're properly wearing their face covering, in this situation, they would be quarantined. In a testing situation, they would be given the option to test and not quarantine. Every spot that's red would then have the option to test and not quarantine. So, if the intention of this is to ensure that we don't have whole-scale quarantines going on, testing options certainly limits those situations. Okay?
So, are you going to kick students out of school?
I had one more question that I thought of. With the examples that you gave, you had the yellow around that student. Currently, we are emailing, like, the whole class. We get the, so, is that going to change then where only those people?
That's a great question. I don't know the answer to it yet. And so, it's somewhat easier in a mask mandate because we can just deal with wholesale, hey, look, everybody was supposed to be wearing a mask. There's nobody that was identified as not wearing a mask. So, you just need to be aware of symptoms. In a mask optional situation, those conversations are going to change into now we do have close contacts. We don't just need to monitor, but we have close contacts, and these are the steps that we have to take. And it will substantially change how we communicate what we need to do at that point. So-
But we would just be recommending, like, the yellow box around them for the testing. It wouldn't be like the whole class?
Unless, unless there were, unless when we talk to the teacher, they identified that they had whole groups or small groups going on in which that student was maneuvering between different groups. So, that becomes another difficult part in contact tracing and making sure. But yes, we shouldn't have to tell everybody in a class that it is.
And for students, how is teachers in the eligibility?
Okay. Any questions over where we're at? I think at this point, we're about ready to make sure that we've got everything ready. Nurses are ready to start training. We have a meeting with admin team tomorrow. And then, we'll make sure that we get all of this information out to parents as we start moving forward.
I just had one more thing. And it's not exactly a question, but I would just like for us to consider aligning our quarantine recommendate, of course, we aren't the ones who quarantine, but from the health department, aligning how, for example, we're only testing the students for the seven days. I would like to, for us to consider discussing later, obviously not right now, aligning how long we are keeping the students who, the parents that do not want their children to participate in the testing, to align those where that would also be the seven days.
They have it currently, as long as they choose to test on the seventh day. So, if they, if they can return after the seven days, if on the seventh day, they have their test and it's clear, then they don't have to stay the other three days.
And I do appreciate that. I know that some parents are not comfortable having their students participate in a testing thing, a scenario. So, I was just thinking that possibly we could discuss that of considering aligning those. That's all I had on that.
Okay.
All right. So, I think we're ready to move on to ratifying the teacher contract. And I think we would have to have during the voting part, Mr. Winkert was going to recuse during that section. Is that correct?
Yeah, when we get to the teacher.
Oh, I skipped a part. I'm sorry. I'm trying to get through. Public comment policy, Section 6.02.
So, typically, we don't have a lot of people coming in for public comment. And what we've seen in the last couple of weeks has helped us identify that our policy and the rules on the card don't match up very well. And there are some issues within the policy. So, Dean, if you would click on the, yeah, this one. So, one of the things that occurs on there is that there's a difference between a patron wishing to address the board and communication. Typically, it's due to some student issue that occurs, that they need to have access to executive session, is different from the public comment section. And I don't know that our policy does a great job of identifying the differences between those. One of them will distinctly say that it has to be done by noon on the week before of a board meeting. The other one would indicate, or seven days prior to a board meeting. One of them would say that it has to be done on noon the Monday of a board meeting. And then, it goes on later, I think, to discuss walk-ins and allowing public comment within walk-ins at any point in time. So, there are really two different parts to the policy that I think need to be separated somewhat. And then, I think it's important that the rules that are on the card show up within the policy for us to address. So, you can see Part Two, and this is the piece that is about coming to the board and identifying your issue, right? And so, there's a card and things to go along with it. But the, there are three major issues with this. One, Parts One and Two are not- One, parts one and two are not intended to interchange, they're two distinct actions in terms of public comment, and yet they are, they are combined within our policy. Two, within the policy, it identifies that, that there are rules for public comment, but they're not identified within the policy, and the rules are then found on the card that people fill out prior to coming to the board meeting. And three, that the, that the rules for public speaking are identified within the wrong portion of the policy. So, within our policy goes back to how we address people that need executive session with our board. So, a couple of things, and having some conversation with, with our attorney about where we wanted to go, it's important for us to, to make sure that within the policy, those, those pieces that are identified within the, the rule card show up within the policy, and they simply look like this, right? So, it identifies that a period of time should be set during the board meeting for residents of the USD 290 to address the board, and those who wish to address the board have to communicate with the board clerk prior to noon on the day of a board meeting. Right? It also indicates the board president should be responsible for recognizing any speaker, maintaining order of the meeting, and adhering to time limit set, so on and so forth. And then you see four, five, six, and seven, we don't have to read them all, but it's the same process. All of them are identified within the rules. It doesn't change any of the things that were done, it simply identifies that the policy is better stated for us to address. Okay? The other piece that, that we, we discussed within this, and Dean, if you would click back and go to the KASB, Public Comment, so, we asked KASB for guidance on this to make sure, really, everything that they indicated here are listed within the rules. Right? So, the, their tips for public comment are basically the same as the rules that we have. There were several conversations that, that began to exist. One was whether or not those who emailed conversations in should be read or posted online. If they're read and people read the minutes, they don't know that they're read. Right? So, part of the conversation was they would reach more people if they were just posted within the minutes and not read. That's certainly something for our board to discuss if they would want to. The other piece that came up is length of time, making sure that there is a specific amount of time for public comment, so on and so forth. So, Dean, if you would go back to the policy. So, I wrote up the general policy, had, had Mike look over it, this is basically the same policy. It does indicate within this that there, that any email communication would be posted in the minutes and not read. That's certainly a board decision, if you want it to be read, that's something that you guys can discuss. But other than that, it takes out the pieces and identifies what is supposed to be public participation in, in what is executive session or, or conversation with the board about a specific issue versus public comment in general, and then what the rules of public comment are. So, again, we won't take action on this tonight, it's simply there for you to begin to review for discussion, and then ultimately, if it's something that you want to adopt, it's in your, your hands.
Thank you. All right. Were there any questions at this point about that? Are we gonna, are you good?
I, I don't have any questions, I just, I'm concerned about if we add them to the minutes, wouldn't that mean that we wouldn't actually hear the public comment until the day after the meeting?
No, we would have the public comments, we would have them.
We would be.
But instead of reading them aloud, there's, there's some concern that sometimes when it's read aloud, it, you know, when somebody writes something, the intent and the voice and the manner is really hard for somebody else to read and have that come across as the way it was intended.
And for deaf people like me.
Absolutely. So, so if it's included, then it's just, we, we would have it all, but then it would be in the minutes for everyone else.
But we would have it.
Yes.
Okay. And then, my other question was, are, would this still allow people to come, come in and, and speak, or would it cut it off at 12 if they hadn't? My concern with that is sometimes that there are things that come up that we add to the agenda after 12, or if we make a mistake and it accidentally got left off, and we correct that, and if someone wanted to speak on that, and it wasn't there before noon.
So, again, I think that's a conversation for you all to have in terms of what you want. The current policy would indicate that, that it should be cut off at noon. It's not, we've, we've typically allowed those things to, to come in as, as walk-ins.
And I think it's great that we're clearing it up and getting them aligned, as to what's on the card and what's on our policy. I agree with that. I just want to make sure that, that we are allowing, accommodating, you know, for people who do.
Absolutely.
Want to speak.
Yeah. Oh, thank you, thank you for letting me know. Okay, so we don't have to worry about that on that next vote. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to section 6.03 now, the ratifying the teacher contract. We have gone over this.
Yep. So, Linda, Chris, Melody, all a part of the negotiating team that finished this up. It'll be nice for us to not have to deal with back pay for, for staff for the first time in, in quite some time. So, this is the final negotiated agreement, it has been ratified by teachers and up for board approval.
Okay. Is there someone that would like to make a motion that we approve the 2021, 22 negotiated agreement?
Oh, I would like to move that we approve this agreement.
Okay, and it looks like it was seconded by Susan, all in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 5-0, and we are down to approve the administrator contract, administrator and director contracts. Again, we have already gone over these. If someone, would somebody like to approve, or make a motion that we approve the contracts for administrators and directors at 2%?
I'm moved.
Second? All in favor, please raise your hand. That passes 5-0 as well. We're down to the superintendent contract. Again, we have been through this. Would somebody like to make a motion that we approve the superintendent's contract?
So, moved.
Second? All in favor, raise your hand. That passes 5-0 as well. And then we are down to the classified salary increases. Would somebody like to make a motion that we approve the increase in wages for classified staff as presented?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. And that passes 5-0 as well. We are down to personnel, you all have received a personnel report. Is there someone that would like to make a motion that we approve said report?
So moved.
There are seconds?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 5-0, and we are down to announcements.
I think one of the things that we should announce, and Terry won't appreciate this a whole lot as she gets ready for retirement, but she's done a fantastic job as our finance director, and is going to do a fantastic job of mentoring our new finance director, Tracy Moore, as, as we begin that transition. So, congratulations to both of them as they begin to take steps towards their paths in their lives, so to speak. Really excited about, about Terry getting to do something different. We won't be excited to, to not have Terry with us, but she gets to retire, which sounds really good at times. Announcements, so, homecoming is this weekend, which will be awesome. So, had a, a huge win for our football team on Friday night against Baldwin Bulldogs, and we'll take on Spring Hill Broncos on this Friday and see how we can do. Pretty exciting to, to watch our kids play well and, and do great. So, we'll see, we'll see what homecoming has in store for us on Friday night. Wall of Honor is coming up September 23rd and 24th, and then, of course, there'll be that football game on the 24th, Wall of Honor candidates will, will be out there being recognized at halftime of that as well. Teacher of the Year, Ms. O'Neil will be with us in Wichita, as well as Ms. Howard, but Ms. O'Neil is up for the actual Teacher of the Year, one of, I think, eight finalists for the Kansas Teacher of the Year, which we're very excited about, so we'll go down and we'll celebrate that with her. Lots of different things happening this week, block party and all of the homecoming festivities going on this week. All of our activities are underway, students are doing awesome things, you had volleyball tonight, all of our kids, I think soccer is away tonight, there's just a lot, a lot of things going on. Tennis and soccer and cross-country and a lot of it. So, Wednesday is the halfway point for the first quarter already, as we start gearing up for the downhill slide in the first quarter of the school year, and all of the things that that brings with it as we start looking towards grade card prep and everything else. Anything else for me? Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I got so excited about ratifying the negotiated agreement that I forgot to send out a big thank you to Ms. O'Neil, who is a master wordsmith, and Mrs. Kemp for her fabulous computer skills in getting everything where it needed to be, and so they were tremendous help.
They're both awesome, absolutely.
And I was just looking at the date of the Wall of Honor banquet, I have that as the 30th.
I do too.
Yeah, maybe it is.
Okay. Would you just double-check that? Because I, I want to make sure that I'm right.
I'll, I'll double-check on the Wall of Honor banquet. I'll find out for sure.
Perfect.
I was thinking that it was the 20, they may have moved it on me.
Okay, okay. Just want to make sure.
Any sense with us candidates to be presented before the?
Well, you would, you would expect that the candidates would know when the heck the thing was, right?
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah, it happens. I apologize, I'll find out for sure, and I'll make sure that we're all updated on it.
Great, thank you. All right, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please raise your hand. And that passes 5-0, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.